Gold Beach, nature's wild side. It's become a tradition. Gold Beach Glass Float Season February 1st through April 30th. Thousands of floats are placed along the beach. Find one and it's yours to keep. Find out more at visitgoldbeach.com. Gold Beach, nature's wild side.
Enough, and let's go ahead and get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. We see that those are still standing and roll call.
Summer Madison, position one.
Larry Francis, position two.
Anthony Pugana, position three.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Tammy Coffin, position five.
My dear Carl Popoff, Mayor, and our City Minister Jody Fritz is here. And I'm going to also kind of mention that to anyone who's recording this meeting, Carl King, bless his heart, thank you very much, is present with us as well. We have a proclamation that's Suicide Awareness and Prevention and Action Month. And to give you a little bit of background, you've already got it on there. But Gordon Clay and Buzz Gordon have done so much toward this. From the Citizens of Care made a request for the mayor to proclaim September Suicide Awareness Prevention Action Month, and so on, and so forth. And the proclamation is attached, and I am about to read that right now.
And then Gordon wanted to say a few words when you were done. So you go ahead and cue him when you're done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. This proclamation declares September as Suicide Awareness and Prevention and Action Month. Suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action. And whereas according to the CDC's most current published data, suicide was the leading cause of deaths for 15 to 44-year-old Oregonians. And Curry County led the state 2011-2017 in per capita suicides. And whereas 20% of Curry County 11th graders report seriously considered attempting to suicide, and 9% actually attempted suicide last year. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles, especially during this pandemic. And whereas reducing the stigma by discussing suicide and warning signs, promoting safe and responsible care of lethal means, and increasing public awareness of the resources available for at-risk individuals, encourages self-seeking behaviors and helps survivors and survivors of suicide loss in their personal healing. And whereas it is important to recognize the connections that mental health conditions and substance use disorders have to suicide, as well as show other external factors, including harassment, bullying, discrimination, and availability of firearms contribute. And whereas asking for help is a sign of real strength and the first step towards achieving mental wellness, particularly during the extended period of the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, I, Carl Popoff, Mayor of the City of Gold Beach, hereby declare and proclaim the month of September 2020 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention plus Action Month for the City of Gold Beach. Let it be further resolved that the city encourages all citizens to learn the warning signs, trust their gut, and using information to ask a troubled friend, colleague, or family member, "Are you okay?" And I have signed it. And Mr. Clay, I understand you want to say a few words.
I would, Mayor. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Birmingham, Oregon. August is overdose awareness, was overdose awareness. According to New York, New England's Journal of Medicine, accidental drug overdose tests, suicides have increased at an extreme rate during the early days of this pandemic. Suspected overdoses nationally jumped 18% at March of this year, 29% in April, and 42% in May. Data from ambulance, state hospitals, and police. A growing number of overdoses now occur in suburban, non-urban settings, often in the fluid neighborhoods. The 2014 study, drug users most at risk for overdose are white, middle-aged, suburban men. The highest overdose death rate in 2015 represented people between the ages of 45 and 54. It's not the people solely under the bridges. The good news is overdoses are 100% preventable. Get help if you need it, and don't let yourself or someone else that you love become an overdose suicide victim. The sidebar is open AA meetings as soon as possible. In the meantime, I venture that more people will die from drug overdoses while meetings are closed than die from COVID-19. September is Suicide Awareness Prevention plus Action Month. Suicide is at an all-time high. In 2017, analysis of CDC broke down category section cancers into separate cancers, and then listed the top 50 leading causes of death. In Oregon, suicide was the leading cause of death in four of seven age categories, from 15 to 54 years old. We also know that suicide rate in Oregon is much higher, and in Curry County leads 36 counties in per capita suicide. The 2019 Healthy Things Survey, 26% of 11th graders in Curry County self-reported that they had seriously considered attempting suicide, and 9% actually had attempted last year. 90% of people who die by suicide have demonstrated warning signs that their friends never picked up on them, especially during this pandemic. Don't be one of those friends. There are the risk factors and warning signs, what to do, so that when somebody you're around, a friend, neighbor, colleague, or a family member who is showing signs of suicide, ask with confidence, "Are you okay?" Let them know it's okay to say, "I'm not okay." That conversation could change their life, and it might change yours as well. Together, we can change the conversation by countering myths and fear with information and action steps everyone can take. We all have a role to play in suicide prevention, not only during the months of August and September, but all year long. So join me in this effort, won't you? If you live in or work in Curry County, watch your mailboxes for a brochure from the Curry County Suicide Awareness Prevention Council titled, "Recognizing and Responding to Suicide Risk During the Pandemic" and show it up the street. Read it and then put it somewhere you can easily find and to refer back to if you notice a friend, neighbor, colleague, or family member exhibiting any warning sign. This will help you gain the confidence to ask them, "Are you okay?", and let them know it's okay to say, "I'm not okay. I'm here to listen." Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for supporting this proclamation.
Well, thank you, Gordon, for all the work that you've done on behalf of this important subject. And we truly appreciate it. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll drop the signed proclamation in the mail to you tomorrow, Mr. Clay.
Please, thanks a lot.
Okay.
All righty. We have a discussion on September Preparedness Month. And we did receive something, Administrator evidently, from the state. And given in light of everything that has happened, it's probably not a bad subject to broach right now.
Yes, they had asked that we proclaim September as National Preparedness Month and to do a home inventory and review our insurance coverage. Unfortunately, I didn't get this in time to have it be as a proclamation. But especially because of all the fires going on, it's definitely a good idea for those of us that are still in the safe zone to go through this home inventory, talk to your insurance provider. Do you have enough coverage? The information from the state on how to do that, build your home inventory, talks about taking pictures of each of the room, a brief description of the items that are in there, and then to talk with your insurance agent. And there's also an app, depending on if you have an iPhone or an Android, you can download this app from their website that will help you to inventory your home. And then also, September is just normally National Preparedness Month anyway. And so there's some information in there that we try to put in every year about just general preparedness, having a kit ready, what you need to do. I got some information from, since we're kind of on this subject, I'll go ahead and tell you now. I got some information from the Red Cross over the weekend related to the fire situation. And I just wanted to, I did post this information on the city's Facebook page, but I wanted to just put it out there so that, Mr. King, it would be recorded, and if folks were watching the video, they could see it. So this is from Carissa Headich, which is, she's the executive director for the Southwest Oregon chapter of the Red Cross. "We are hearing word from the community on how they can help. This need right now is great, but very specific. Number one, the generosity of the public in wanting to provide donated goods has been heartwarming. However, at this time, the best way to support the American Red Cross is to make a financial donation at redcross.org. That allows us to provide support like meals, shelter, relief supplies, and recovery assistance immediately where it is needed most. Two, we are looking for volunteers. Anyone who is interested in joining Red Cross can make a difference in just about 48 hours. Once registered online at www.redbcross.org/volunteer, we can reach out and start the process of getting new volunteers trained and out to support your community." So again, that information is posted on the city's Facebook page, but also wanted to get that out there now. And then our federal, one of our federal senators, Senator Merkley, sent out a pretty, it's like eight pages long, of Red Cross information specifically related to the wildfires and COVID-19. So I'm going to see if we can get that posted just on our regular city website because it has a lot of really good information and links to just like all kinds of stuff. So I'll try to get that to the folks that do our website and see if we can get that posted.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this? If not, then I think that we can proceed. We are going into a public hearing at this time at 6:45 PM. And this concerns the amending local public contracting rules. And as you know, whenever the state changes their rules or alters them in some way, then we have to go ahead and make sure that our review, or we have a review on the local amendments that are required to maintain statutory compliance. Administrator, reading through this, what I, you know, we pretty much can make our own as long as we aren't in direct violation of ORSs. We've always pretty much, as far as I know, done handle our contracting and what have you based on, as I believe that you wrote in here, based primarily on merit as opposed to cost and what have you. Could you go ahead and just explain everything again, please?
Sure. The state public contracting rules are in statute and administrative rules. And as Mr. Mayor said, whenever the state updates their public contracting rules, and public contracting has to do with like when we have bits for things like construction or services, like an attorney or engineer, architect, that type of thing. There are certain rules that public entities like ourselves have to follow in order to comply with state contracting laws. Jurisdictions have the ability to opt out of the state rules as long as the rules comply with certain portions of the state law. Since 2011, we've had our own public contracting rules, which they're not substantially different from the state rules, but where there's latitude available, our legal counsel has prepared that for us. So it's not something that staff has written. Our legal counsel has prepared this for us. And I didn't expect you all to read like the voluminous eight point, you know, 80 pages of it. But the findings that were attached to the resolution adopting the public, updating the public contracting, that's the portion that you really needed to read, and that's included in the packet. Whenever we update our public contracting rules, by state law, we're required to publish it. And we have to do that in the Daily Journal of Commerce, which is a statewide public contracting like newspaper, and then in our local paper. So we have done that. I put a copy of the notice, what was sent to the Daily Journal of Commerce and to the reporter. So those were published. And then we are required to have a public hearing, which is this part of it. So if folks want to comment on the rules that are going to be slightly different than the state rules, they have the opportunity to do that. I have not received any comments. I actually didn't expect to. But we're required to have a public hearing on it. So if somebody were to call in...
Yeah, let's go ahead. Is there anyone?
Hold on just a second. I think Anthony Pugana said, "I've tried to enjoy by phone. My audio isn't coming through." So I think I just let him in. So typically, nobody comments on it. But if you have questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Well, right now, I do have to, unfortunately. Well, not unfortunately, because I know there's probably nobody out there that is going to comment on it. Nevertheless, I still have to ask.
Yes.
And so I am asking if there is anybody in the listening audience that would like to make a comment concerning what has just been discussed? All right. Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like to say concerning this? I'm going to take that as a no. So I'm going to end the public hearing at 7, I'm sorry, 6:50 PM.
And Anthony, can you hear us okay now? I'm open. I mean, we have a forum without him, but still.
Okay, good. Then we can go right into the resolution R2021-07. This is amending the public contracting rules. Have a motion anywhere?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R2021-07, a joint resolution of the City Council and Local Contracting Review Board opting out of the Attorney General's model public contracting rules and amending public contracting rules for the City of Gold Beach.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's as fast as I can.
Second.
Second, I think, was that second by Counsel Brennan?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Motion been made, and it has been newly seconded.
And just as a quick explanation, as Counsel Coffin said in the title, the City Council acts as our local contract review board also.
Is there any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 All right. We are evidently experiencing some difficulty with...
Aye.
Okay, you have to get it.
Got it. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Then we have now miscellaneous items and what have you. We've got continuation of food cart mobile vendor discussion. And Administrator, I want to thank you for putting the information in there that you did. I did not realize that there were four levels to that, you know? And each level is, and then they all have, they have to be on wheels as well, too, everything. So it's interesting. And what we're going to end up doing about it is going to probably be a little interesting as well, too. But obviously, and the council has agreed, that some action has to be taken. So with that in mind, Counsel, do you have anything that you would like to say to begin the discussion?
I do.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just had some thoughts I'd like to get out on the table and just for discussion purposes. Because of our urban renewal district and the fact that it's a long Main Street, I would like to not necessarily seat Main Street with a bunch of food trucks. One suggestion I had was maybe a couple could go in the fairgrounds, if the fairgrounds is willing to do that, it would be a money raiser for them as far as rent. And it would quit the food trucks off Main Street, but it would be close enough that they would probably attract attention, I think. Maybe in the port. I know there's one across from the post office that has been, but he seems to be pretty temporary. He's there a day, maybe, and then not. So I guess my overall issue at this point would be to limit the amount that are on Main Street visible to the public. Parking lots, Hunter Creek would be a great place, by the lumberyard or somewhere along there. Not necessarily against food trucks. I just don't want to see a bunch of them along Main Street. And that's about it.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I, you know, I agree with you as well, too, that some areas like Portland, Eugene, and what have you, you know, they can donate, you know, a block and put everything in one place and be convenient to people. But here, you know, we're in an entirely different situation. As Counsel Brennan brought out, we've got a two-mile-long, you know, Main Street. And fresh is a little off. My only concern would be, you know, the fairground wouldn't be a bad idea. And down by the port would be a good idea as well, too. But I'm wondering about the one that we have, and it's been there for quite some time. What do they call that?
Vloggies.
Where the old hotel used to be, for the movie house.
There's Hunger Pains, which is a true cart.
Yeah, home.
And then the one across the street, the Thai Place. And after reading, and I should probably give a little bit of history. As far as city regulations go, because we don't have anything in our zoning code specific to food carts, we have allowed them in areas that are zoned commercial because it's a commercial use. And we have relied on the Health Department to enforce health regulations related to like food stuff. And I didn't realize until I started putting this packet together for you that there's some pretty specific rules related to the mobility of the things. And the concern that I had about the one, the Thai Place, with all of the things that are connected onto it, it actually, that, based on what I'm reading, is in conflict with the state health codes. So I haven't had the opportunity to contact the county health department yet, but I am going to contact them and find out why. They're the licensing agency. Why that has been allowed to happen because it appears, based on their code, that that's not, they need to be like an actual mobile vehicle, whether it's a trailer or like a milk truck, you know, already on wheels or whatever. But all of the stuff that's been added to it, that doesn't appear to be allowed, and that is a concern of mine.
Administrator, if you don't want me to interrupt you here or something, when it began, what class was it? Because now it looks like it's a Class 4, that they can do pretty much anything that they want to. I mean, they can cook anything that they want.
Right.
Did it begin that way or not?
Well, until just now, I didn't realize there were different classes.
Yeah, I did.
But it said in there that it has to be totally self-contained.
Right.
You know, it has, there can't be structures added onto them. They can't have, it has to be self-contained. And they have a bunch of stuff built on and strapped on, and it's not, it's not a cart.
It's actually, it is not then, and I guess this is a gist of my question. That facility then, because it looks like it's one complete entity, a building, what have you, whatever you want to call it, restaurant, whatever you want to call it. So what you're saying is, and I can't remember when it first started, other than the fact that, you know, they got water and sewer and everything. But was it as complete as it is now when it began?
Well, this is the second Thai Place to occupy that spot. The first one was just the truck. And then they had, there's that little kind of faux little house next to it that was on the property that they used like to store. They didn't put have food in there. I think they had like napkins and things in that. But what's there now, there's two little structures built onto it, and they have a porta potty strapped onto the back of it. And it is in no way mobile, and it's no longer a cart. Now it's like a bad fire and building code issue. So I am going to contact them and find out about that. But most of the information that, most of the information that I've read from other places, they truly are trucks or trailers. You know, they, they don't stay in one place. You know, they, they move either daily or weekly or...
How are we?
Yeah. But they don't, like, the two that we have, they're like pretty much semi-permanent. And it doesn't appear, based on what other cities do, that that's like the norm. They truly are mobile food carts. And I would agree with Counsel Brennan that I'm not necessarily against food trucks, but I also agree that, you know, because of our urban renewal district and because of Gold Beach Main Street is, you know, trying to beautify our main corridor there, that, you know, maybe that's not the best use of those private lots.
You know, I was wondering, you know, because we have the example from Portland, and most of the towns in Portland have seen that area, even in Eugene, is there a place, you know, that had been designated strictly for food carts and that type of thing, you know? I mean, got a whole block of them around there.
Right. I think Counsel Brennan had a question.
Yeah.
I do.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Well, I know that the Thai truck, they have a sewer line going into the street. So I know that we have the fog ordinance and the regulations for grease and all that stuff, but how are we going to address that and keep these places mold?
Go ahead.
That, I think there's what they call quick connect. You know, that it's basically like a clean out, and they quick connect to it. And that I would prefer, and so would Public Works, that they are actually, we would rather have them hooked up to sewer than have a holding tank and take it somewhere. We would prefer that it be processed. So I'm not opposed to that. They can do a quick connection. It doesn't have to be a permanent connection. Same with the water, much like an RV, okay?
Oh, okay.
But, so I'm not necessarily opposed to that. It's all of the things built onto them that's not good. Because now you're a restaurant.
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
I wanted to talk a little bit. I know that our moratorium negatively affected the events over on the beach. And I'm anxious to find out how we're planning on mitigating that in this ordinance. And also, I'd be happy to go back to their board and ask them about the possibility of opening up their food court and making it more of a year-round thing.
You know, that's exactly what I was getting to, that I was referring to, is having something along the same lines as an area dedicated to it, such as like Portland does. We obviously can't do it on our Main Street. But that is the one area that I can see. They could accommodate it. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My question is, how can we, as a city council, regulate that they have to go to the event center and then have the event center charge them the space to be there? That seems kind of backwards.
Well, first I think that, first I think we should ask, because that was one of the suggestions, and I believe that Counselor Kaufman has some suggestions that she's going to make. One of the things I was going to suggest is, most of the stuff I read is that they're not really on private property. They're either in, like, cities will allow them to operate on streets, like they can park like in a metered spot for X amount of time, or they can operate in public areas, in parks. So if we worked with the fairgrounds and said, okay, we're not against food carts, but we would like to have them in a central location, how do you guys feel about that? Maybe we can work something out with the fairgrounds that they, you know, charge a nominal fee to say, okay, if you want to have a food cart space, it's this much a month or this much a year, whatever. It would be sort of like the Health Department regulations. I mean, we don't really regulate what the county health department says. But I think that we could approach the fairgrounds or another public entity, the port, both of them, and just say, okay, we would like to have these on public property rather than on private lots. How do you feel about that? And then I think because we have the room tax that we are doing on their behalf, that maybe we could ask them to do the same thing and say, okay, that could be a revenue generator for you as well, but we would prefer that you keep the cost under X amount a year, under X amount a month, or, I don't know. I think that you could have that option, the council could work with the fair board and say, if you were to allow them there, how do you feel about that? But that's something that I think the two entities could work out.
That sounds good. I just, I was trying to wrap my mind out at it. How can we regulate that they go there and then have...
It would have to be the permission of the fairgrounds to say that, yes, we do want them here. Because I assume they want them there because they had them come, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So I assume that's something they would like to do. But that would definitely be a conversation that the city would need to have with them.
They would like to have them return in October, the food trucks. And we're anxiously awaiting the outcome of this council meeting to see if they would be allowed or what steps they needed to do in order to get permission to have the food trucks come in October for some type of, I think they were calling it a harvest festival, but that's not definite. It's not, nothing's been planned.
Well, the fair director had asked that, that I talk to the council at this meeting and see if there was some kind of dispensation that the fairgrounds could get, you know, given the fact that this has been kind of an unprecedented year. And would they consider it? And we had, let me make sure nobody's out there. Linda has a question. Linda, I will answer your question in just one moment. They had invited the people that are normally here during the fair. And because we had passed this resolution saying that we were going to prohibit new ones until we came up with regulations, I contacted the fair and said, you know, hey, you know, you guys' property is along 101. So then we kind of talked back and forth, and we came up with the compromise that, okay, were it not for COVID, they would have been here during the fair. So that vendor would normally have been here, that's not something we necessarily would have regulated, they would have been here anyway, for the fair weekend. So I said, until we have the opportunity to talk to the council, they can come for one weekend because that would have been when they would have been here anyway. They would have been here for one weekend of the year. So that's a decision before we leave tonight that you guys are going to have to make, is that, do you want to keep this resolution in place until we have more of this discussion? Do you want to allow the fairgrounds to have maybe once a month or something, I don't know? I did tell them that because they would have been here for the fair, they would have been in the food court area, so they weren't allowed to set up right on 101. They needed to set up in the food court area because that's where they normally would have been. And so we're just treating it like, were it not for COVID, that's where they would have been.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. Linda, you had something to say?
She said, are you going to grandfather any existing carts? And what about the new lot that's for rent across from Sunset? Right now, it doesn't apply to the existing ones, as long as they're in compliance with other state laws, which I need to verify that. And then what about the new lot that's for rent across from Sunset? If somebody were to come in today for that lot because of the resolution, and Linda, I'll send you a copy of that resolution, the answer would be no, on 101. The resolution that was adopted by the council in July, I believe it was, said that they were going to be prohibited until we came up with some regulations, just along 101. So like, if they were to come in in another area, they would be allowed. So, okay, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Counselor Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to add or say?
I do, Mayor, thank you very much. There was a lot of great, great information provided attached to this agenda item. And I'm hoping that maybe we could consider or converse amending the moratorium to give the event center a little bit of freedom to have those food trucks on the 101. I really would like to dissect some of the information that was provided in the packet. I reread through it, it's a lot of pages, and I, it's my opinion, I'd like some more time to really dissect what's there and maybe kind of discover what might work to our advantage and kind of plan long-term. I mean, you know, we really thought we were doing the best for the city and Main Street when we approved that moratorium, but then ran into some conflicts with the event center. And the event center resides in Gold Beach, but really it's a courier coming event center. And so I, what I, what I don't want to see is that local vendor that hires local kids be punished because I'll take responsibility for the fact that I hadn't even thought about that. So I'm hoping maybe we can converse on that a little bit.
Thank you. No, just a second, Counselor. Counselor Pagano and of course Counselor Madison, and right now, it also means Counselor Brennan. I cannot see you on here, so I cannot tell when you raised your hands or if you wanted to speak. So what I'm going to do is, much like I did with Counselor Madison, I'm going to go ahead and ask if you've got anything that you'd like to say. Yes, Administrator?
Counselor Pagano had typed in the chat. He said, I would rather see the food trucks along Ellensburg than the bare lots that it will turn into. So like, that would be like referring to the lot that Ms. Pinkham was talking about, the vacant lot. So that was Counselor Pagano's comment.
Well, you know, actually, personally, I agree with that. I would much rather see Hunger Pains there than, well, it used to be a big hole.
Well, he's talking about the one across the street, across from Wong's. So on the south side.
And I mean the other side as well, too, because that is actually, you know, filling in space, which to me is all that matters. Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Brennan, anything that you'd like to add?
I would not be opposed to, during the time that this moratorium's in place, if like Counselor Madison suggested, maybe allowing a little activity at the fairgrounds until we can get this thing sorted out. In other words, loosening that up a little bit, because they have a room. That's really one of the only places that has a room. Other than the port or private property, like say down near the lumberyard, maybe. But, yeah, I don't, I would not be opposed to loosening up the thing for the fairgrounds.
All right, thank you, sir. Counselor Kaufman, you've been strangely silent. I know you've got something to say, so please.
Well, I wanted to listen first. It appears to me, in reading through the documents, that the state is really regulating food prep and washing bathrooms. That's what they seem to focus mostly on. They did say that these are to be mobile, they are not to be permanent. And what is happening here is they're becoming permanent. And it's kind of an interesting concept, because I think the whole thought of food cart was that it would be mobile, it would go here for a while, it would go there for a while, and move around for events or different things. Because we really don't have a volume to keep anybody busy for any length of time, except for maybe the peak summer months. So it's kind of an interesting deal. The things that I did not see, and if somebody read it and I missed it, please let me know. I didn't see anything about fire suppression. A traditional restaurant will have fire suppression over their grill. I believe they have them over their fryers, but there is a system for that. And it basically puts the fire out instantaneously, if there is one. It doesn't really address garbage, which I think most cities say have a garbage can, which is easy to do. And it doesn't address fog, fat oil and grease, which I think our ordinance would if we tied in to this. I agree with what people are saying, that perhaps the port or the fairgrounds could be our incubator place if somebody wants to be that entrepreneur and try to get their restaurant started through the food cart. That might be the way to do it. I'm just not really excited about anything that's permanent. Let them come four days a month, except for maybe July and August when it's really busy, something like that, and not have them be permanently on a lot. Excepting the two that are already, right, on 101, I think there's a third one down at the port, that let them, you know, do what they're doing. I emailed Ewan Howard, who helped us with the Urban Renewal Agency. And I asked her, because of the questions that I saw in the packet about the civil rights for food vendors, which I found interesting, versus the cities that want to stop competition. And I liked some of their arguments. So anyway, I asked her about it, and she said, it's good questions, and there's a lot of ways to look at the issues. Some cities see that food carts as incubator businesses. They start as a food cart, then they decide the business is good, they open up some water businesses. She said Ben Tillmack and Beaverton have them. I know that Salem and Portland also have areas like that. But she also sees my point about, the whole idea of an urban renewal district is to raise the tax base. We have a blighted area, we need to fix that, so it's not blighted, so that everybody gets their money back from the tax base. So, you know, how can we do it both ways? She said, it could be a win-win if you can find the right spots. So I think we're all kind of in agreement that the port and the fairgrounds are probably the two best places to have an incubator business, to allow food carts in a safe way. I was talking to the Administrator today, and actually, the old one-stop concrete slab might be a nice place to put level. Be a nice, easy way to level things, they could put something in the middle, allow food carts to come once in a while. I don't think there's enough business to have a bunch of food carts all the time.
Are you referring to the...
Yeah, Counselor?
Sorry, sir.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Are you referring to the old Bun Boy lot?
Yeah.
That big cement?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be an interesting place, they got lots of parking. All they'd have to do is put it in a restroom and lots of hand washing stations, and it'd be good to go. So the question is, how do we do that? Do we do a condition use permit? Do we just have an ordinance? Do we have an overlay zone? How's the best way to plan for that? And it sounds like the only things that we have to really worry about unless something else comes up is fire suppression, garbage and fog. The state is supposed to be taking care of the hand washing, the bathroom, temperatures of food, those kinds of things, for public safety. So I don't think we have to make it too complicated if we can narrow it down into small items. Now, I know that this isn't on the agenda at this second, but it's come up in two different places, or three, about opening up the fairgrounds and allowing it now. I actually went to the food cart vendors and I did buy something from each one of them, 50% mask, and there was nobody there supervising. I don't think the fairgrounds has the capacity to meet COVID rules. It's not our job, it's the county's job to do that. But if we allow it, we're giving our blessing for them to break the law. So that's something I think we have to think about. I don't want to be the mask police, but it appeared to me that they were not capable of compliance.
Now, I've got a question for you. I thought earlier the big slab, you know, where the old lumberyard was at. And, but I was under the understanding that that had been now taken over, or in other words, that there were plans for it. So I, you know, I'm just wondering if you had heard whether or not that's, anything to that?
I haven't.
Okay, Administrator, have you heard anything at all concerning that?
I have not.
All right, thank you. I was just concerned about, but you brought up some good points.
Can you make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
I think I might have heard something from somewhere, or maybe, or excuse me, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Madison. The city used to have an ordinance where it was a condition to use permit for the port, anybody in the port district to build a hangar. Now, we had changed that, because it seemed kind of stupid to have a condition use permit to put a hangar by the airport. And so we do have the authority through zoning to regulate what public entities put in. So yes, we can tell the fairgrounds what to and not to do through zoning.
If it were an overlay zone, yeah.
So that's why we're allowed to tell them no food carts, because it is in our purview.
Yes, because they, the fairgrounds and the port hold our zone public facilities, 7 PF, and there are uses that are allowed in that zone. Just, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Pinkham had said, from an interested citizen viewpoint, the carts are collateral and encourage people to stop and linger. So she was saying that as a private citizen.
I also...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I got to remember to raise my hand.
You're all right.
I also don't mind the food carts on 101. I know the idea, Main Street doesn't like that idea much, but personally, I think it's awesome. I love the variety that it offers.
You know, I, like I mentioned before, just a second. Like I mentioned before, I like them filling up. For many years, we had a lot of open space up and down Main Street. And that began to change when Corner Drug developed the area it did. And Ted Watkins, bless his heart, built the bookstore. And I always thought that those two special acts right there did so much to enhance the looks of our place. When the old hotel and the restaurant burned down. And then after that, well, I guess it had been so long ago now, I don't know if the movie house went with the hotel and the restaurant at the same time, or if they were...
The '70s for the hotel, and it's the '90s for the...
Yeah, '70s were being at the sheriff's office.
Well, that left, needless to say, at least for the one area there that's been taken up by, well, the movie house area. You know, that was a great... You know, that was a great big pit for, for a long time. And then they filled it in, and there was still nothing on it. And so along with what you're saying, Counselor, I, I agree. I enjoy seeing something in those bare spaces and something that is actually providing a service and an opportunity for someone to earn a living. I have no problems with that type of thing at all. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, just, I would just echo what I said earlier, that my concern is the, the adding, the addition of things. You know, that if it truly is a food cart like the Hunger Pains one, that is a food cart. Um, I, that, that's, but now that I know that there may be other rules, I, I am going to be contacting the health department. But it, I mean, my preference would be that they be in one location, but I'm not, I'm not the decider of that.
Well, and one I forgot too, the other one that did so much was Sunset Pizza. The hole that they filled, between those three main entities, they filled quite a bit of land that was barren for quite some time.
And Counselor Pagano said, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I agree, I fully agree.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Um, well, where do we go with this? Yes, ma'am?
I think we have at least three counselors that are okay with putting them on 101 with some restrictions. So I think what the administrator wanted from this meeting was some guidance.
Yeah, because I, when, when we talked about coming up with either, and I don't know if we have to update the zoning code or if we just make it part of the permitting process, you know, if that's the administrative portion of it, but...
Mr., Counsel Brennan has his hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Counselor Brennan?
Uh, yeah, one thing I wanted to add was the parking situation. I know, uh, that when, when the Thai place is open, if they're busy, there's a lot of cars parked on Main Street, which makes it difficult for cross-traffic to see. So when considering where these would be located, if they are on Ellensburg, I think has to be some provision for off-street parking. On-street parking in some places is, is not going to be safe.
That's a good point, sir. Yeah, Oregon would be a problem, and particularly even around, as you know, at that area where the Thai place is at and right across the street from it, uh, the pizza place, that visibility getting onto the roads, on, on to Interstate 5, Ellensburg, is, is pretty, that's pretty precarious on either side there. You, you have to go in, pass the doggone, uh, sidewalk, I mean, the, the crosswalk, just be able to see whether or not you have the, the space to get out of there. No, that's a good point, sir, thank you.
So, uh, so do we, Counselor Kaufman, that just, you know, what, what other direction that you want to give us if you wanted to be an administrative thing just through the permitting process? Or, but I just wanted direction from you, but I just kind of got a little overwhelmed when I saw all of the stuff that was out there for food carts.
Like, yeah, understandable, there's an awful lot there. I didn't realize all of those things as well either until I started reading it. But Counselor, what would you like to do? Would you like to extend the moratorium and think about it a little bit more, or... Yes, ma'am?
I think Counselor Kaufman was ready to make, maybe make some kind of motion.
Well, I couldn't let me sure we're on the same page, so I thought a motion might get us there.
All right, go ahead, ma'am.
So, um, I'll make a motion to ask staff to draft a document that addresses fire suppression, garbage, fog, parking, and possibly some rules for, well, no, if we're going to do whatever, never mind. Uh, and so that we can have food carts anywhere on commercial zones in the city. And do we want to also include probably what, 7 PF public facilities?
Include what?
Uh, 7 PF public facilities, so the fairgrounds, the port, I think.
Thank you.
Port has other zones too. Um, so we probably want to add it to marina, because some of the ports are marina.
It's just on the water portion of it though.
So, did I make that very clear?
So ask staff to draft a document that addresses fire suppression, garbage, fog, parking, uh, to allow food carts in the 4C and 7 PF zones.
Would you, ma'am, interrupt?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Um, would you have trash?
Uh, yeah, we have garbage, yes.
Oh, I, I missed that twice, wow.
So, fire suppression, garbage, fog, parking.
All right. What was it, sir?
So ask staff to draft a document that addresses fire suppression, garbage, fog, parking, to allow food carts in the 4C and 7 PF zones. That was the motion.
Your motion has been made. Does everybody understand the motion?
I just have, what's the seven, what's the seventh, uh?
Uh, that's public facilities. So that's, that's government properties like the city, the school, the port, the fairgrounds.
Yes, Counselor.
Can we exclude the events that are on the beach from this moratorium in that motion? Or does it need to be a separate one?
Yeah.
Or how does that work?
Uh, go ahead, Ms. R.
Okay, so, so Counselor Kaufman has asked staff to come up, the motion was ask staff to come up with the document. Now, if you want, after you discuss this or, and vote on it, you can repeal the resolution from July.
I would prefer it to be separate.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, it's not, but I'm just saying that, that...
I didn't want the topic to be closed with this resolution and then have me miss my window of opportunity to discuss the events on it.
Yeah, I don't think so, no.
No, I don't, I don't think the resolution precludes that.
Is there a second?
Yes, so...
Yeah, well, just a second. Um, and that's a question that I wanted to ask you. Um, what Counselor Campbell was talking about, the resolution or the, that is being proposed does not preclude what we've already discussed about concerning the fairgrounds, correct?
Well, that's a separate resolution, and we can address that after we talk about, um, the, the resolution that the council adopted in July.
Right.
Was a moratorium until we came up with new rules.
Right.
So Counselor Kaufman is asking, because it said that I would bring you draft rules for this meeting. I, I was overwhelmed and did not do that. So, so Counselor Kaufman is giving staff direction, which is what I asked for. So then after we, um, talk about her motion, if the council wants to revisit that resolution from July, you certainly can do that, and you can do whatever you want as far as repealing or changing or however you want.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, motion had been placed before the council. Is there a second to it?
Sir.
Counselor Brennan, seconds. Uh, discussion.
Okay, and Counselor Madison said, Kaufman, can you speak up? And Counselor Pagano has his hand raised.
Counselor Pagano, what would you like to say, please?
Um, I'm...
You're not coming in very clear.
Um, I'm trying to...
Is everybody able to...
Can you, can you type it, Anthony?
Yeah, we're not, we're not hearing you. It's coming in very garbled.
He may have his phone on.
I think he's typing it now.
Okay.
Hang on just a sec. What do we mean by fire suppression? Okay, may I answer that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Pagano, one of my concerns was that, um, restaurants have to have like a fire inspection to make sure that it passes fire code. And I assumed that the health department did that inspection, but based on this OHA stuff, it does not appear that that is the case. So, um, in, what I would like to see from a staff standpoint is when somebody were to come in, like right now we have a, like a two-page permit process where we ask them to coordinate with Public Works on the fog portion. Well, we could put, um, and then like when you come in for a building permit, you have to get a sign up from the fire department. What I would like to see on our city permit is that, um, they need to have, um, a, a fire inspection, basically. And, um, Counselor Kaufman and I were speaking earlier specifically about this. Obviously, our fire chief is a restaurant owner, so that would be a conflict. So we would have to designate another, um, city fire person, personnel that is, that doesn't have a restaurant to inspect them. But, you know, we have, actually, uh, one of the fire captains works for our Public Works Department, so that, you know, that would be an easy thing to do. But I just want to ensure that, um, that whatever, like, you know, that they have a, a fire extinguisher, or if they have fryers, that they're doing whatever the fire code says they're supposed to do. I thought the health department was doing that, evidently that is not the case. So we just want to ensure that those, those trucks are fire safe.
Who is doing that?
Well, the, well, it used to be Curry Community Health, and then a portion of the stuff went back to the county health department at the beginning of this year. And, uh, environmental health evidently is one of the things that did go back to the county. And there's a gentleman named Kent Downs, that he worked for Community, Curry Community Health, and he came back to the county when, when Ms. Ward came back to the county. So he's the one that inspects, um, RV parks and restaurants. So, um, I was under the mistaken belief that the health department portion of it included fire, but it doesn't. So we just want to ensure that that gets done.
Understand, thank you, ma'am.
Did, did that answer the, um, oh, okay, thank you, Anthony.
Uh, any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
No.
What was that, girl?
Uh, that was a nay.
Counselor Pagano? Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
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 So, and Counselor Madison's was an aye?
Was a nay.
Nay, okay.
And then Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, so, uh...
Now, we're...
I voted aye.
Yeah, so four to one.
Four to one, that's what we've got. Now, we were talking about another resolution to suspend...
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, I would like to make a motion to exclude the event center on the beach from the moratorium on food vendors along the 101 corridor until a policy can be written that they can follow.
All right, thanks, ma'am. My motion has been made, is seconded to that.
Yes, sir.
All right, Counsel Brennan, I think I heard him first, has made, has seconded.
Okay, so just, let me clarify real quick. Um, so Counselor Campbell, exclude the fairgrounds from the moratorium as, uh, in the Resolution 2021-03? So exclude the fairgrounds from that moratorium?
Until a policy can be written that they can follow. I don't want to exclude them forever and ever, amen, but I want to exclude them until we can get a policy that they can, okay, follow. Okay, got it?
Counselor Kaufman?
I have a question, the, afraid I don't really answer to. Can we make a motion to modify a resolution without actually rewriting the resolution?
Um...
I believe you can.
I believe you can.
Yeah.
Um, I would prefer that we reference the resolution. So, um, so Counselor Campbell and Counselor Brennan seconded, if we could just say, as referenced in Resolution 2021-03, and then it's a little bit clearer. If, if that's okay, if we could make that amendment, Counselor Campbell?
Yes, ma'am, as amended.
And Counselor Brennan, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so now we do have an amended, a motion, and a seconded to that.
Okay.
So are we gonna, uh, once again, I'll ask if there's any further discussion concerning the motion that's put, uh, before you. Question?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay? Okay, Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And Counselor Pagano? Was that, give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
All right. Counselor Brennan? Four to one.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we've got that pretty much taken care of as best as we can for right now.
Okay, so I will have something for you next month for the, in relation to Counselor Kaufman's.
All right, now we have Counselor, I'm sorry, 2020 slate of council candidates.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
One more question on the food carts. One thing we didn't address is the ones that would move around. Do we need to address that? As we're doing this, would it be a good time?
I, I think that I should put something in there for you for the mobile ones.
So I would... We don't have money, but we used to have an ice cream truck.
Yeah, so I will include semi-permanent, because I don't want to say permanent, semi-permanent and mobile.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a fine, good. Okay, um, 2020 slate of council candidates, Administrator?
Okay, let me get to that page. Um, the, the filings closed on August 25th, and so just as a, um, an information item, I included who filed, uh, all three of our races are contested races, I think that might be a first. Um, the mayor candidates, incumbent mayor, Kar Popov filed, Counselor Kaufman filed. Um, for council position two, incumbent, um, Counselor Brennan has chose not to run for this election, which, um, we are, we are sad to, to see you retire, Counselor Brennan. You will be missed. Um, we appreciate all your years of service. Um, so Chip Bradley filed, and then Beth Barker Hidalgo. And then for council position four, incumbent Counselor Campbell, and then Jeff Crook. So those are our slate of candidates. And the ballots go out, I believe, the first week of October. So I think that... Yeah, so. And despite what you've heard on the national media, Oregon has mail-in balloting, and it has worked great for the last 20 years. It's just fine.
You know, I'd like to say something here too concerning Counselor Brennan. That, uh, you know, I understand Counselor only too well, believe me, I understand. But, uh, quite frankly, you will be missed. There are, you know, three counselors, three of them, that have, and I've had so much, well, not only fun with, but respect for and what have you. Counselor Brennan, Counsel Brown, Counsel McVeigh, all gone. And actually, it kind of saddens me, it really does. It's not, believe me, it's not that I have, you know, that I don't like the counselors that are left, that's not it at all. It's just that I do miss the ones that served together for so long. So, I'm gonna miss you. The fact is, I might be out with you, I don't know. But if I go later, I've always enjoyed so much working... But finally, I've always enjoyed so much working with you, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. City administrators report.
Okay, there was just a couple of things that counselors had brought to me, you know, kind of related to COVID and stuff going on. One of them was Counselor Madison and Counselor Campbell had brought up the fairgrounds thing, so we kind of addressed that. And then Counselor Pagano, did you have anything that you wanted to discuss, or was that situation resolved? I, I had a discussion with him today. I think that we got what his concerns were addressed. So if I'm wrong, he can, when he gets back, he can, he can let me know. Let me just email him real quick. Counselor Pagano, were you okay on what we emailed about today, or did you want to talk about something?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, someone get a.
I'm on the top side. I feel like we, I want you to address the council as far as teleporting, municipal codes, unlawful transfer. I don't know if anybody noticed, there's been a lot of mobiles lined up asking for donations and delivering that into businesses and driveways and things like that. I kind of want, if anybody that's pursuing something online that's broken.
Okay, so what he was talking about was unlawful transfer between vehicles? Like Brookings has a code where, like, if you're stopped at the stoplight, you can't transfer things out the way that, basically, it's like begging or soliciting at intersections. So he's wanting to know if, if the council, is that something that, that you guys want to talk about? And if so, I would be happy to see what other cities have, and I could, Counselor Pagano, if you want, I can put together some stuff from other cities and have it on for the agenda next month? Okay?
All right, good. I saw the thumbs up. Yes, Counsel Campbell?
I know, I know that you're probably going to do this, Administrator Brett, but be sure and talk to Chief Tracy.
Yes.
Because I believe that there are criminal codes that are already in place that we can enforce and save you a lot of time.
Okay.
And having to draft a policy.
Okay.
More of a, something that if the chief wants to vigorously enforce, he could have his officers do.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and I will, I will talk to him about that. And it could be just, like, some things you just have to post it, you know, like, you know, you have to say pursuant to ORS, blah, 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 it is prohibited, and, and you just have to post it. I don't know. But, and then I will also talk to the attorney about it, too. Okay, so for next month, I'll have that. Okay?
Okay, that's one counselor concern.
Okay, and then the other one, we had already addressed with the fairground stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right, good, so they're working. And even, any other counselor had a concern? It's a good time to speak out about it. I knew you would. Oh, you're right. If not.
No, I really do.
You do.
I do.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I saw on Facebook today that somebody was accusing a business of not being mask police, and their employee didn't have one, and the employee was flipping. And there was like 150 comments on there, the owner couldn't get to it, couldn't explain it. Now there's probably going to be an OSHA complaint and possibly an LLC complaint. And I just encourage people, if you see something wrong, business owners have a really hard time managing employees, and you can't even get them to show up on time. And so making a mask all the time is not easy. Some of them have health conditions. So if you see something that's warranting, put it here on social media, go talk to the manager or the owner first politely and kindly. We got to try to survive this as a community, and fighting each other is not going to do it. We got to come together and, and try to make this work and, you know, keep people safe, but also not close businesses. Not, not one business I can think of in this community can afford a $10,000 fine or be closed down for a period of time with their liquor license. It's just, it's too severe for what the state is doing. And the county is doing very little to help because they think it's a hoax. And that doesn't help us because we are battling by the state law. And the federal government apparently agrees because now we have an eviction moratorium from the CDC because of the Trump order through December. So it's serious enough that the higher governments are saying, thou must, but that doesn't mean we need to be jerks. We can be nice to each other. Remember, we're a kind community. Let's stay a kind community.
That's a good point, and I think we'll take it. Thank you. Yeah, if you've got a problem with it, instead of going all over social media with it and giving a black eye to everybody and everything, just go to them. That's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
I would agree, Counselor Kaufman, that, yes, it is hard to, and, and the managers and the owners can't be everywhere all the time. And, you know, yeah, try to quietly address it with them, and, you know, okay, if you don't get satisfaction, then maybe something, but don't have social media be your first outlet, you know? That's, I would agree.
All right. Administrator?
Okay, so I had already mentioned the thing from the Red Cross, and like I said, I will try to get that up on our website about that. Also, in regards to the fires that are, are burning statewide, I'm on a mailing list where I get updates about the fires. If that is something that you counselors would like, it's pretty comprehensive stuff. If any of you would like copies of those emails, let me know, and I'll just forward those emails to you if that's something of interest. I don't want to just forward it if you're not terribly interested. But while this is going on, if you, if you wanted, just shoot me an email, and I'd be happy to forward these emails to you because it is good information. It comes from the state and feds, so. And then, kind of along the lines of what Counselor Kaufman was talking about, this is not over. We're not to the end yet. As of September 1st and today, today's the 14th, we have six active cases right now. That's the most that we've had in this short amount of time. We just had Labor Day weekend. I suspect that we will have more. So just, we're not over this yet. We still need to continue to be vigilant, so just wanted to put that out there. And then that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And just to piggyback a little bit on what we're saying, of course, the information that you're getting and what have you, if, if you go to one site, and I wish I could remember it, but it shows a picture of air quality throughout the state, if you look at that, you've got to take that into consideration a little bit because there is one that stated today that we were in the 400s and 500s and that type of thing, which is not the truth. What they were doing is taking that from Cave Junction, which is in that particular condition right now. If you go to Quality Air Index, I believe it is, which I did, and you'll notice that quite the contrary, our air condition today was actually quite good. And it increased its goodness, if I can put it that way. From the morning to the afternoon, it went from something like 51 to 40 something, which is okay air. There's, we don't have as much to worry about. But I know my wife and others were getting a little panic-stricken over the fact that they thought that, well, we didn't smell any smoke, that didn't mean that all of these different things were in the air, that were attacking and evading our bodies and turning us into mush. So, you know, just be careful with the information that you get. So Counselor Madison, I hope you were planning to talk a little bit about that phone meeting that you held, I believe it was on, what was it, Tuesday?
Which, what was the topic of the meeting?
That was one was trying to decide what we were going to do, what the county was going to do concerning any great influx of, you know, people that have been dispossessed, displaced.
Right, yeah. Did you want me to speak to that now?
Well, actually, it's, we're at Counselor Comments, and you started, so I was wondering if you were going to bring that up.
Sure, absolutely. So we have seen a fair amount of concern being expressed by the community, and in a, a quite a large influx of folks coming into the community looking for resources, and when those haven't been identified, folks start to panic a little bit. And so Commissioner Boyton and I felt that we should at the very least identify who's doing what, where, and maybe fill some gaps and prepare them. And I know that the invitations for that meeting were fairly last minute, and there were several people that couldn't attend, but more importantly, we wanted them to know that the conversation's being had, so. Had some, some of the team at the table and just talked about emergency managers and the Red Cross and donation stations and how we would be prepared if we do see the onslaught and the volume of traffic in Brookings versus Gold Beach and the uptick in law enforcement calls as a result. And just really sharing information, I think probably the biggest takeaway from the community was that even though there were players at the table coordinating services and planning, that that wasn't necessarily being communicated to the community, and so it, it was a little unsettling for the citizens. So that's basically what we discussed is, you know, what do we expect? What are we seeing other places? You know, weather, things about capacity and where firms, why do you need to, whatever.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anything further that you'd like to comment on?
No, but thank you so much for the opportunity.
You're quite welcome, ma'am. Counsel Brennan?
I just had a question, if anybody knows, on the Gold Beach Community Forum, there was a group that was taking donations to take supplies over to the valley. And I contacted one lady, and they had, I guess, sent a trailer over, I think, on Saturday. I just wondered if anybody knows who that group is, because I think one of the drop-off points was the fire station, another one was the church behind the drugstore, and I just don't know if there's, if they're going to continue, or if anybody knows how, or who that group might be that we could maybe contact them for further assistance.
You know, sir, I have not heard of them at all. I'm sorry. I don't know. Counselor Kaufman, have you heard of them?
I don't know them.
Yeah, I don't know them either. I'm a little leery of organizations that I'm, I'm not, well.
Yeah, and I'm not on Facebook, so.
Administrator, have you heard of them at all?
I just, my, I'm not on Facebook because I, I can't, I can't be there. But my, my husband said last night that he had read somewhere that somebody was taking a load over, so I, I don't know. Counsel Brennan, I'll, I'll ask Bill if he can tell me what, what spot he found that on, because he said that he saw that they were taking some stuff over today. So if I find that out, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anything further, sir?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Oh. Counselor Pagano?
Oh, Summer says Ryan Elizabeth on Gold Beach Community Forum. I don't know who that is, but Ryan Elizabeth.
Okay.
Anthony says, I have nothing need to report, just thankful for some clean air and a little bit of sunshine without smoke. Hopefully, it continues. Here, here.
All right, good. Thank you, Counselor Madison. Counselor Campbell?
I have nothing, sir.
All right, Counselor Kaufman?
I don't know. I imagine most people have heard that Phoenix and Talent were significantly impacted.
Oh, yeah.
And I belong to my lieutenant coalition for manufacturing home parks. And there were 12 parks impacted, mostly lost, up to 1,500 sites. They're reporting 600 homes. I know it's more than that because of the parks that were impacted. Rebuilding those is going to be very difficult and expensive, just the infrastructure. And it's the biggest non-subsidized affordable housing in America is a manufacturing home community. You know, and Sam Sharp lost their entire park. It was a 55-plus, 164 spaces. They're in their eighties and lost everything. They did have their two cars there. So it's, it's very devastating over there, and I, I'm hoping that our young people will get into the construction trades and go over there and help them rebuild. And it makes me think about what, what should we do as a city to make sure that doesn't happen to us? I thought current fire codes would prevent something like this happening. You know, they make you put that big thing up over on, from one building to the next so it doesn't move. But somehow, rather Burger King burned down. I thought they were built out of metal and concrete. I don't know how these happened. So maybe we can learn something? Because those were not like in Paradise, California, full woods.
Yeah.
Right off the highway. So there, we have a lot of trees, and maybe we need to think about how to deal with our perimeter. And I know you did a lot of work, staff did a lot of work on the beach last year, or the year before, after the White House fire. But I think we should start thinking about how we can be more resilient to fires because we have a better chance of getting that than we do the earthquake in this town.
Yeah. Fire Chief Krieger, that is a deep concern of his, that how close.
I don't know if we have the authority to do stuff. We may need to work with the sheriff and the COES Fire.
We don't have the authority.
Well, the, he was talking about working with COES Forest Patrol, with the private project on, on our city limits line that, you know, tried to reduce fuels, yeah.
And, and, you're absolutely right. Something like that came down, what was it, the 2002 fire, 2003, the Biscuit Fire, where we were all so afraid that if it jumped the rope and went on the other side, that we, we could have been toast. And thankfully, it stayed on this side.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if without proper forest, forest management, what have you, I mean, it's a tinderbox just waiting to go up, and it's unfortunate, but you bring up a good point.
Well, we do have private forest land here.
Yeah.
We have it in the middle of the city, and, and I think they're a pretty friendly group. Maybe we could get them to work on the fuels, and right next to the city is, is private timberland. Maybe we can talk about defensible space and what can we do to work together?
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I have three acres in town, and some of it is forested. I would love to see a program with the Forest Service to top, to raise the limbs off the ground four feet or five feet or whatever we want, some type of, you know, if you want to do some fire prevention, here's some, some crew that you could hire at a discounted rate or at a standard rate or whatever it is to help facilitate that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, this is, I think, given the tremendous loss of property, even the lives that have been taken during those times, it's got us all thinking. And first of all, I hope everybody is so thankful that we have not been personally impacted by that. We have been very fortunate so far, and I pray that we continue to be so. But. But all of our, you know, this is, I just want to get into this for a second because this city has always, insofar as I've been around it and in a position I have been and what have you, we have always been mindful of our neighbors. We have always been there to help. The last fire, the public help that came forth was absolutely astounding. When we had those that were fleeing the fire staying here at Riley Creek and then at the fairgrounds as well, and I went to visit them virtually every day. And it was so good to hear them talk about what a great community we had and how good we were to them. And I don't know, and I've talked to the administrator about this, and of course, she concurs as well, too. I don't know where all of this is going to end. None of us do. We don't know how much more we're going to be impacted by the people that are just fleeing or needing a place to live. But they can rest assured that we will do our level best, our very best, to accommodate them because not only is it the right thing to do, who knows if today comes when we might be imposing upon them and we might need their assistance. So, yeah, I'm just, it's heart-wrenching. It really is heart-wrenching to see what's happening. And at any rate, I remind, I do have a question for the administrator to begin with, and I cannot recall, was Eternal Rock concert, what happened to that? Is it yet to come or...
Yeah, it was this past weekend.
That's right.
The, it ended up being nothing, which was good. But they had advertised up to 2,000 people.
Yeah.
We, the city staff, we had been conversing with them since July about concerns about, that we didn't think that they would be able to have this event at this time considering that, like, we're meeting virtually and the Olympics were canceled and professional sports are canceled, and, I mean, it's just, you know, we didn't think that they would be able to have it. So, I did contact the state agencies that are supposed to be regulating the COVID restrictions. They referred me to the county health department, who is supposed to be enforcing the state regulations. So, I had written a letter last week to Turtle Rock just basically saying, you know, you know, we have concerns and, you know, you need to make sure that you're following the state regulations. And that was sent to the state agencies, and I also forwarded it to the county health department. I did hear back from the Turtle Rock people. They only had about 100 tickets sold. So, it ended up being okay. They contacted me today and said that they raised over a little, a little over $1,000 for the girls' basketball team. So, evidently, whatever profit they had, they were going to donate to the school, which was great. Glad to hear that. I was just concerned that if it really was going to be 2,000 people, that this was not the appropriate time to have that. So, thankfully, that didn't end up happening. I think probably the fact that the fires were going on had a lot to do with that. Like I said earlier, we're not, we're not over the virus thing yet. We're not to the end. We're not going to be at the end for a while. Life is going to be different for a while. And everybody, yes, we haven't had that many cases here because we're rural, but we've had a lot of cases in the last two weeks. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to be like Texas, but there was just a case in Maine where one wedding event ended up making the largest event for their entire state as far as infections and death rate. So, all it takes is one small event in one rural community, and things can go sideways real fast. So, I pray that that doesn't happen here. But I'm also concerned about, because we are having these fire events, and people are fleeing, and they need to, they need to flee, but we're also still in the middle of this, you know, bizarre year that we're dealing with, with this other stuff going on, too. So, yeah.
We'll do the best we can. We always do, and that's, that's...
So, we just, we just need to continue to be vigilant, so...
Agreed.
Yep.
The other thing, too, I wanted, I mentioned last month that I was going to have that surgery type of thing. Unfortunately, that did not come about. Well, I ended up getting an infection, and so they couldn't do it, so I had to. So, now, supposedly, it's going to be Wednesday, but there are other complications now as well, too. So, I don't know. But if I do, you know, given the fire, the smoke and everything that they've got there, that's a problem. And so, I'm not sure. I called them today to find out what the heck was going on, and hopefully, I didn't hear anything back, so I'm hoping to find out tomorrow. But if so, once again, Wednesday to the next Wednesday, what have you, I'd be pretty much out of action.
And that's over Medford, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Over Medford.
Yeah. And what were the smoke called and everything? Yeah, well, the hospital, they told me that they had just opened back up today. They were closed for three days, and they were still, even within the hospital, still experiencing a lot of smoke. And it's not a real safe, as you've seen with the air quality maps and what have you. That area is pretty bad. It's nothing good about it. So, I don't know if I really want to risk going over there or not, and thankfully, I can maintain, even though it's getting old, but I can still do it. Eric, but I wanted to let you all know about that. Possibly be gone and what have you. So, unless there is anything else, councillors, do you have anything else you might want to add before we shut her down?
Summer says, I'll be praying for you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Now, obviously, we're not going to have any citizens' comments because I don't know that we've got... Linda, did you want to say anything?
No, she's just waving.
Okay.
Trish, oh, no. She said that she was having trouble hearing, so I think she might be waiting for Carl to upload the video to his County Voices.
Okay, she's having trouble hearing?
That's what she had said a little while ago. She had sent me a message. So, I think she was going to wait for Carl to upload it. She usually just listens.
Bless her heart. I'm glad you stuck around.
Yeah.
The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is Monday, October 5th. It'll be at 6:30. It'll be right here. So, with that said, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I respectfully make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I don't believe, you know, it's interesting, councillor, but I didn't think anybody could beat councillor Brennan today. I honestly did not. And here you have it.
So, you'll have to second it, councillor Brennan.
Please second it.
I did.
All right, good. Well, my faith in humanity has not been destroyed. Okay, motion has been made, and Ben seconded question.
Aye.
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 All right. Bless your hearts all. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Been a good meeting, a lot of good stuff.